Speaker of the House of Representatives, Prime Minister Femi Bajabamila, Deputy Leader of the House of Reps, Abu Abadasin, Deputy Chairman of House Committee on Aviation, Abu Musafali, Distinguished Members of House of Reps Committee on Aviation, The Honorable Minister for Aviation, The Directors in the Ministry of Aviation, The Heads of the Chief Executives of Aviation Agencies, The Captives of Industries and Aviation, The Aviation Stakeholders, The President of the National Labour Congress, Comrade Alubah Waba, The Distinguished Guests here present and members of the press. It is my pleasure and honour to welcome you to the commencement of a three-day public hearing on the repeal and reenactment of the Enabling Civil Aviation Acts of the six agencies under the Ministry of Aviation. The House, a recognition of this important sector, has considered the executive bills and referred the same to the Committee for Further Legislative Act. The bills are: One, a bill for an act to repeal the Nigerian Meteorological Agency Act 2003 and to enact the Nigerian Meteorological Agency Act to provide for the regulation of meteorology and related matters. Two, a bill for an act to repeal the Nigerian College of Aviation Technology Act Cap N 96, LFNN, to 2010 and to enact the Nigerian College of Aviation Technology Act to provide for its organization, control and operation and for related matters. Three, a bill for an act to repeal the Nigerian Aerospace Management Agency Act Cap 9 N 90, LFNN, 2010 and to enact the Nigerian Aerospace Management Agency Act for the purposes of providing effective air navigation services in Nigeria, ensuring safety and regulate the clarity of air navigation in Nigeria and to any other place which Nigeria has responsibility of providing air navigation services and for related matters. A bill for an act to repeal the Civil Aviation Act 2006 and to enact the Civil Aviation Act for the regulation of civil aviation in Nigeria and for related matters. A bill for an act to provide for the establishment of Nigerian Safety Investigation Bureau for regulation, prevention and providing effective administration for safety investigation in Nigeria and for related matters. Finally, a bill for an act to repeal the Federal Airport Authority of Nigeria Act Cap F5, L N, 2010 and to enact the Federal Airport Authority of Nigeria Act to provide for the effective management of airports in Nigeria and for related matters. The need for these enabling acts to be repealed and subsequent to enactment of these two acts are glaring considering the urgent needs to meet the contemporary demands and international standards for the general development of the aviation sector. It is pertinent to note that since the last review of these agencies, significant changes and developments are taking place in the aviation industry, which necessitates the review and amendment of these acts so as to bring them up to date with the full operational requirement and dictates of the industry. Further to that, there is a compelling need to align the sector with the international best practices as outlined in the International Civil Aviation Opposition ICAU guidelines. This event is very important and crucial because of the major roles aviation plays in our economy and our national life. It therefore presents all of us an ample time to effect changes that will reshape this unique and high-tech sector and position it competitively in the global space. Aviation is a dynamic industry and we must constantly review this status to keep pace with these observable standards and wish to reiterate the committee's continued commitment to ensure that the sector remains one of the best through appropriate legislation and oversight so that at the end of the day we would have succeeded in equating to Nigeria an air transport industry that is properly regulated and better managed for greater efficiency. We cannot overemphasize the importance of this sector to the country's GDP and revenue generation. We intend to collaborate with the relevant agencies to ensure the appropriate avenues are created for economic development in the industry. The big public hearing is scheduled to last for three days. On each day, it is intended that two bills will be extensively discussed and analyzed. We urge participants and stakeholders to collaborate with us in this assignment. Finally, let me express my appreciation to our leader, the Speaker of the House of Representatives, Prime Minister Femi Bajabamila, for his great support to the committee and his passion in actualizing the legislative agenda together with the Project Nigeria.
Today, the House of Representatives through its Committee on Aviation engages the general public and stakeholders in the industry to propose ideas through their respective memorandum towards delivering an effective and efficient civil aviation act in tandem with global best practices. At the commencement of the ninth House, one of the thrusts of our legislative agenda was to initiate general reforms in collaboration with the executive, taking into consideration the earnings of the people and the positive impacts to her on Nigeria. One of these critical areas is the need to ensure extensive development in our aviation industry to conform with the current international civil aviation organization standards and recommended practices. It is not out of question that the established law of the service provider, aviation agencies like Federal Airport Authority of Nigeria, Nigerian Aerospace Management Agency, Nigerian Meteorological Agency, the Nigerian College of Aviation Technology and the regulatory body, the National Civil Aviation Authority, are far from meeting up with the international best practices, hence the need to amend and bring them in conformity with international best standards. The bills are as follows: A bill for an act to repeal the Nigerian Meteorological Agency Establishment Act 2003 and to enact the Nigerian Meteorological Agency Act to provide for the regulation of meteorology and related matters. A bill for an act to repeal the Nigerian College of Aviation Technology Act and to enact the Nigerian College of Aviation Technology Bill to provide for its organization, control and operation and for related matters. The third is a bill for an act to repeal the Nigerian Aerospace Management Act and to enact the Nigerian Aerospace Management Agency Act for the purpose of providing effective air navigation services in Nigeria, ensuring and regulating and regularity of air navigation services and for related matters. The fourth is a bill for an act to repeal the Civil Aviation Act and to enact the Civil Aviation Act for the regulation of civil aviation in Nigeria and for related matters. The fifth, a bill for an act to provide for the establishment of the Nigerian Safety Investigation Bureau for the regulation, prevention and providing effective administration for safety investigation in Nigeria and for related matters. A bill for an act, which is the sixth, a bill for an act to repeal the Federal Airport Authority of Nigeria Act 2010 and to enact the Federal Airport Authority of Nigeria Act to provide for the effective management of airports in Nigeria and related matters. Eighteen, four, six, one. Now, I have taken the pains to list these six bills and if you listen carefully, you will realize that the bills are all fresh bills. Five of them repeal existing bills. They're not even amendment bills. They repeal the existing bill to reenact a new bill. Now, if you understand, let's let's work. When you repeal them, it means that you are addressing the whole body of that. And because of developments and successes, you are reenacting a new act. And that is why I ask where are the stakeholders? Where in the private sector? So out of six bills, we have five repealed and one bill, fresh bill, that deals with the investigation. So these bills are not cosmetic at all. They go to the very heart and to the core of the aviation industry. That's why they're very important and this public hearing is very, very important. It is imperative to note that the development of our aviation industry is an added advantage to the growth of our economies. It is in this vein that the House of Representatives will continue to support total readministration and upgrading of our airports and our services. The consideration of these bills during this public hearing is a testament to our commitment to give new life to the aviation sector and make our airports to be a better non-oil revenue generating sector as is witnessed in other advanced economies. Let me commend President Mohamed Bouari for his willingness and collaboration, yes, his willingness and collaboration with the National Assembly in developing this all-important sector for good. The House of Representatives will ever be ready to provide the necessary legislation and needed oversight to achieve this purpose. I urge the participants to take advantage of this public hearing in offering constructive and significant contributions to the discussions of the bill. I assure you of the parliament's thorough appraisal of your various propositions and recommendations. For the love and development of our dear country, I declare this hearing open and wish you fruitful celebration. Thank you, thank you. I hope this level is well represented here and I apologize for not acknowledging you at the beginning. A very capable, very, very committed president of NLC. You're welcome to this public hearing. Honorable Minister.
If they have sent two weeks later here to discuss about number two, this speaker's up, that we've been on this for five years and we're running through them through system for the congresses. And after that, we gave them this bill somewhat above to go through. And with the seats of Congress and the government around them. So I thought I apologize and I'm very curious to know as to why they're looking here. Because I have to speak because I know that the speaker will leave before I begin anyway. So that's why I think I'm very close up.
Yes, no, thanks for the short answer. You raised a very important observation. When you were talking, I saw two hands go up. Or two hands for the aviation sector does not count it at all. But having said that, we'll give that the benefit of the doubt and say that maybe it's a complication gap. Maybe they'll be here later now. Maybe they're here tomorrow. Maybe they're but look, I decided if you're not here, you're not here and the work must go on. Yes.
I think most of them are interested in fact.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, nobody is interested in meteorology and the rest of that. Okay. Run away before you start the break bad. I have to get the public hearing open and I wish you all the best. Thank you. Straight to the point, starting by appreciating your patience and willingness to accept civil aviation as an important item for economic development of any nation. Certainly, civilization in Nigeria has left where it used to be at the background, now to the forefront of economic and social political activity of this country Nigeria. It has grown during the last five years to become the fastest-growing sector of the Nigerian economy. It had added and increased its contribution to the GDP of Nigeria, making it one of the most important sectors for economic advancement of Nigeria and consequently the prosperity of this country. Mr. Chairman, sir, it is my honour and pleasure to be here in this gathering to consider views and opinions of Nigerians and in particular experts and players in this all-important industry, civil aviation industry. Mr. Chairman, honourable members, the journey to this amendment has been long and tedious and it is arising from the result of finding of ICAO, International Civil Aviation Organization, universal oversight audit program in the year 2006, as well as a finding in the United States FAA category one certification audit in 2010, that the acts as they are of some of the agencies for service providers have now become regulatory in nature. The Nigerian Civil Aviation Authority should be the only and autonomous regulator of civil aviation in Nigeria. Thus, Nigeria was requested and agreed to take corrective action to address these findings. So my action today and in the next three days would ensure that these findings have been corrected and civil aviation is in conformity with international best practice according to ICAO standard and recommended practices. Consequently, Mr. Chairman, a committee involving relevant stakeholders was constituted by me to review the Establishment Act of six aviation agencies, not only to close all the findings but remove regulatory powers from service provider agencies, but to also want bring the respective acts up to date with development in international civil aviation as there is only one aviation and there is no aviation B. To separate powers among the agencies, an upgrade INCAT to continue to lead training institutions of civil aviation in the world, to give NIMET deliveries to commercialize some of its products for better service delivery, to remove impediments into smooth rail of the functions of the agencies and ensure seamless coexistence between these agencies. And lastly, F, to encourage the agencies to initiate avenues of generating more revenue for their own activities and so on, Mr. Chairman. After a series of meetings and deliberation by the committee, the six bills were produced. The draft bills were then cleared by Federal Ministers of Justice and also the Federal Executive Council before the transmission to National Assembly by Mr. President, President Bahamut Bouari. We have earlier on appeared before a committee of this honourable House. After the transmission of the bill by Mr. President to the National Assembly and submit a written report detailing the reasons behind this request for repeal and enactment of this act. The timetable has shown today, Mr. Chairman, that we'll be dealing with NIMET and INCAT. Permit me to say that NIMET was established under the Nigerian Meteorological Agency established from Act 2003. In the course of carrying out the statutory functions of the agency, it is observed that there is need to reposition NIMET for its effective performance of its duties. There is need to enact an act that will unequivocally give the agency the sole authority in matters of whether its correlation, recording, dissemination to the public with no regulatory function, Mr. Chairman, which is ceded to Nigerian Civil Aviation Authority. For emphasis. The Nigerian College of Aviation Technology was established by the Nigerian College of Aviation Technology Act 1964. Since the establishment of the college under the Act, significant changes and developments have taken place in the industry that necessitates the review and amendment of the Act to bring the provision of the Act up to date with the operational requirement of the college and dictates the aviation industry. This chairman in the next couple of days will be receiving new aircraft, training aircraft into the college to add to its fleet, which are very cost-effective and they will reduce the cost of training by at least a third, I said, a third of the cost it used to be. We are on our way to making this college the best in the world. So far, it is leading in many, many areas around the world. Looking at the years when these two agencies were established, one will have no doubt that there is need to review their laws to bring them to bring them in current technological development into their operations and expand the source of their revenue and improve the quality of their services. The agencies NIMET, NAMA, INCAT, SCAFAN and SIB will appear before this committee and present the said additional corrections and amendments of the committee's consideration. I wish this committee and I know the committee would do justice in the interest of our nation and the goals and development of civil aviation. I so submit, Mr. Chairman.
To our son, what have put the rain in wonder got in Nigeria? The nation's law, Bahamut Bouari, take yourself to Gao, Giaro, the post Koi Ma, I can't tell them to try to get prepared this for Nigeria themselves. Kuma wonna wonna the mahimanti savet da shee savurindia gyan sama k'ali ne wonda idan akasama akasi to akela yo aluma dukyo yusu ati sabo na akaba da aminta kuku ba da akale aya alu ba besa wala saali wa na duka deh oda shee se nyama gache wa yaaka mata ama duku kintara mbawu sabo t'ung alu k'elita deh sitindo da uku da akayisu so da yaaka basu shee ne duvi ne she da bayan nba ka la muskouviwa itukuma wonna masana anta ta ka la hapata, ta ka la egita, ta ka la bomkaasa ta kega luka shende kavata ache anywa te gyan ra iru wonna sabo da ka shee saa chikin ili namu mahimta alava sira te muka wa na m'uduri duwe amuske k'oliva wonna madalisa.
Me ide me aki ganza saamart idan akama la gyan ra.
To na waru kori dasa ka la wa to chefte sa lo da kuma sa ka la k'osote engenchi ma genchi hadaruka sa m'guas bunka telu azik indikit azik itu wonna masana anta na abraka.
I will put crucial weather and climate information services to various socio-economic sectors and also contribute to the regional and global observation systems for the benefit of all. This is in line with the old Meteorological Organization Vision 2030, which is where all nations, especially the most vulnerable, are more resilient to the socio-economic impact of extreme weather, climate, water, climate and other environmental events and empowered to boost their sustainable development through the best possible services, whether over land and sea or in the air. In the course of carrying out its statutory functions, it was observed that there is the need to reposition NIMET for effective performance of its duties. The NIMET Bill 2019, which is before the National Assembly for a public hearing today, is for the purpose of enacting an act that will therefore give the agency the sole power, sole authority to regulate licenses, approve and authorize the standard for meteorological activities and operation in Nigeria with the exception of aeronautical meteorology which is regulated by Nigerian Civil Aviation Authority, SCAF. Some important highlights of the bill, Mr. Chairman, sir, belong as some of the important highlights of the amendment bill. One is the function of the agency. The bill seeks to be more elaborate than the existing act to enable the agency, enhance its function amid its operational requirements. The agency needs, one, have a clear regulatory powers; B, effectively regulate climate information generation and dissemination in Nigeria; C, be able to charge and collect revenue; and D, effectively manage utilization of climate and weather information in various sectors of the economy of our national life. In order to achieve the above objectives, section eight of the bill, we are seeking amendment of section eight of the bill there. Particularly, we envisage a situation whereby NIMET will now be given the power to charge cost and sustainably recover charges for services rendered by the agency to all sectors of the country. Another important thing we are envisaging is a situation whereby the new bill will give us power to establish training schools for the training of observers, forecasters, meteorologists, meteorologists, engineers, technicians and other related activities. So as to enable all to have necessary manpower that is well competent to enable all to discharge our functions. Restructure of the agency. The agency desires to identify, develop and exploit new revenue sources and effectively manage commercialization of weather and climate services, delivery to various sectors of national life. Mr. Chairman, sir, permit me to say here that as it stands in our law, it is only, the law only recognizes the charges we make in the aviation sector. So we envisage a situation whereby the act revised now will give us necessary powers to be able to charge for the services we deliver to other sectors. To be able to do that, there is the need to do away with a fixed or rigid list of directorates or department in the agency. In other words, the directorate or department in the agency need to be restructured and so as to allow flexibility and easy creation of new ones where necessary. Two, revenue sources of the agency. In line with commercialization drive of the agency, there is the need for new revenue sources to be spelt out in the act so that the agency can have the powers to charge such sources of revenue. Specifically, section eight, section sixteen is introduced to amend section fourteen of the existing act and create additional sources of revenue for the agency. Particularly, we envisage a situation whereby the NIMET will be able to have power for to establish, for to register, to license, to monitor and to undertake supervision of meteorological stations in the country. Number four, financial provisions upon of the agency. This section amends section fourteen of the existing act on which is aimed at increasing additional sources of revenue for the agency in several areas. What we are envisaging, Mr. Chairman, here now is for us to be able to have additional revenue sources so as to be able to meet all the challenges that are before the agency. Number five, the issues related to investigation and enforcement. We are envisaging a situation whereby NIMET in collaboration with other statutory government agencies can have the power now to submit violators of provision of this act for necessary investigation enforcement. Number six, some national service delivery initiatives to be improved when this act is revised. Mr. Chairman, sir, as indicated earlier, the agency needs new revenue sources to be able to improve investment in our climate risk anti-won system in line with WMOR sent step of global climate statement which requires increased number of weather stations by member states. Mr. Chairman, sir, permit me to add here that when this administration came on board, there were only fifty-four stations. When this administration came on board in 2015, there are only fifty-four stations when by law we are required to have over nine thousand stations in Nigeria. However, through our efforts, we have been able to raise the number from fifty-four to about two hundred now, which is our threefold increase. But even though we have achieved that, it is far cry from what we are envisaging to have in the country. A highlight spectrum of NIMET weather and climate services delivery initiatives and international capacity development undertaking that will benefit from the amendment of this bill is summarized as follows. One is numerical weather prediction at seven kilometer grid resolution every three hours so as to be able to be providing these particular services quite randomly within the country. Number two, issuance of short and medium run weather forecasting impact within the country. And then number three, seasonal rainfall prediction which we have been producing, which have been every year annually, which we are also downscaling which have been every year annually, which we are also downscaling to local state and local government, who, I envisage a situation whereby we be able to downscale it up into the farm level within every local government. Number four, multimodal and several product current amount. Number five, a number of bulletins that we normally produce from time to time, including agrometeorological, Quaternary Climate Review Bulletin, drought, marine and other bulletins that we normally produce. And then, Mr. Chairman, sah, we also have entered into a number of agreement with universities and educational institutions which has enabled us to increase the density of our network, like I said, from fifty-four to one hundred, to about two hundred now. Regional Technical Support Program, Mr. Chairman, sah, the developments tried by NIMA as an organization has transformed, has transformed it into one of the pioneering weather and climate institutions with, not only in airports but even within Africa. We are particularly rendering a lot, we are particularly rendering a lot of services to countries in Africa, which we need to be further empowered so as to be able to render those kind of assistance. Few of the initiatives that we have been rendering at regional level include, one, we have already entered a five-year host country agreement, we are hosting one of the two offices of WMO in Africa, which is the office, regional office for the North, Central and West Africa, and the other one is hosted in Nairobi for east and southern part of the continent. We have also been rendering technical assistance, Liberia and South Australia on public weather services delivery. When you tune into the radio and television station in this country, all the weather forecasts that are issued on daily basis in those countries are generated and sent by Nigeria's and the cost of the agency. We have also rendered technical assistance to the Republic of Malawi for implementation of quality management systems for aeronautical meteorology in that country. We have also rendered assist technical assistance to the Republic of Gambia for implementing QMS, aeronautical meteorology and also training of personnel. As we are talking now, Nigerian experts are currently in Gambia training, Gambia's largely at the expense of Nigerian Meteorological Agency. We have also hosted understudy tour of the Republic of Liberia and South Australia. Mr. Chairman, sah, the foregoing, the foregoing has clearly indicated that NIMA, the current NIMA Act needs to be revised in order to give us wide powers to be able to discharge our function. And therefore, we are filled to the House to cause a matter of urgency, consider the pros and we are making for the amendment, and so that this bill will be passed as early as possible.
Presentation by Representative Benjamin Okizika, to a public hearing conducted by Committee on Aviation for various bills, including the Bill for an Act to amend the Nigerian Meteorological Agency Act Number Nine of 2003 to grant the Nigerian Meteorological Agency the sole authority to grant approval and licenses for the establishment of meteorological stations and for related matters on Tuesday, 17th November 2020, at House of Representatives Conference Room 231. Permit me to stand on existing protocol. The background of this bill is based on the need to observe the weather and climate for purposes of research, prediction and focus. And this need cannot be swept under the carpet, especially in this era of climate change and attendant natural disasters. Mr. Chairman, you will recall that the primary purpose of government that is shrunken in Section 14 to Sub B of the Constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, 1999, as altered, is the security and welfare of the people. The vital need to preserve the integrity of the Nigerian environment and thus secure its sustainability for present and future generation require clear and unambiguous provisions in the Nigerian constitution and legislations. As a people living very closely to and depending for livelihood on nature and environment, we should do all within our powers to ensure that nature maintains its cycles, and it is important to note that starting point is the constant wide range, far-reaching study and observation of weather and climate. Challenges of meteorological services in Nigeria, Mr. Chairman, has been, it has been that Nigeria is a, it is known that Nigeria is a massive country with a total landmass of nine forty thousand square kilometers and going by the recommendation of the World Meteorological Organization, that between hundred to three hundred square kilometers, you must ensure that there is at least one observatory. Then it means that technically we should have nothing less than nine thousand stations across the country. Interestingly, Mr. Chairman, the Nigerian Meteorological Agency have only fifty-four observatory stations across the Federation. Mr. Chairman, honorable colleagues and invited guests, Section 7, Sub 1Q of the Nigerian Meteorological Agency Act provides for the agency to be the sole authority that approves and establishes meteorological centers in Nigeria. This inadvertently makes it unlawful for any person to establish meteorological station anywhere in Nigeria irrespective of its purpose. This means that all universities, polytechnics, colleges, secondary schools, even private sector that own and raw meteorological observation do so contrary to the laws of the land. Mr. Chairman, you will acknowledge the fact that fifty-four meteorological observation stations nationwide is a far cry from the required nine thousand observation stations. When, what then do we do to resolve this issue and timeously also? Mr. Chairman, the way forward. Mr. Chairman, much as it is worrisome that we are far below the expectation, we must realize how difficult, how difficult it is for government to directly fund through the agency the establishment of as much as nine thousand meteorological station. The way to go therefore is to open up the sector by identifying the existing stations that are not part of the network run by the agency, approve and license them and as well as enter into collaboration with them, upgrade them, provide them with the necessary support. At the moment, there are about forty universities that are C4 polytechnics, thirty-two colleges of education and thousands of secondary schools that have meteorological stations. Licensing, regulating this and regulating these meteorological stations as well as other intended stations will be quick way of improving upon the density of meteorological stations across the Federation. Mr. Chairman, honorable colleagues and invited guests, to realize this key objective of opening up the station, the section, to participation by other entities, whether private or public entities, there is need to amend the existing law. But I'm happy today, we are going beyond amendment, we are going to establishment act, the bill. Mr. Chairman, honorable colleagues and invited guests, the bill which comprise of three clauses primarily seek to provide the Nigerian Meteorological Agency with the power to be the sole authority to grant approvals and licenses for the establishment of meteorological stations in Nigeria. Section 7, Sub 1P of the Act empowers the agency to be the sole authority to approve and establish meteorological stations for meteorological observation. This bill seeks to amend that paragraph by replacing it with the following, quote, be the sole authority to grant approval and license to persons wishing to establish meteorological stations for meteorological observations. The very essence of the proposed amendment is to grant the agency the power to license the establishment of meteorological stations across the country, as against the present arrangement where the agency is the sole authority that establishes meteorological station. In conclusion, Mr. Chairman, although a vast amount of meteorological data covering a period of over a hundred years exists in Nigeria, there is considerable scope for improvement. There is urgent need to increase the density of meteorological observation station across the Federation to meet the standards set by the World Meteorological Organization, among other things. Mr. I'm going to specifically refer to some of the provisions that we will request the House to try to look at them and amend them, because some of them actually is not in conformity with the best global practice. And let me start first by trying to designate the aviation sector essential services. This is a domain that is within the international level standard. In fact, Nigeria is a signatory of the international level standard, and let me say that sixty years ago, under a democratic government, the first laws that Nigeria as a government, as a sovereign, adopted and rectified and domesticated is those conventions, where it's clearly stated out which sectors are essential, and that's why those provisions are clear provision in our level law. And therefore, aviation sector does not fall under this category, said Arm Forces, police is clearly stated in the level law. So if this is an aviation law, you cannot go and import a provision that already exists in a level law and that has international implications. And Kuma put it, I'm sure possibly the government may not be aware of this, but on the 18th of October 1960, under the first democratic government, these particular eight conveyor co-conventions were signed and rectified by Nigeria, and today they form body of our level laws. So I want to crave your intelligence to look at this very passionately, most of our unions, five of them that are here, knows that globally, this does not qualify to be an essential service. Two, also, I have curiously looked at all the base. The best global practice is actually to carry along all stakeholders. In the entire boards of all the management of those agencies, I've never seen all the five unions carried along in the management structure, unlike what obtains in many, many other agencies of government, because social dialogue should be an ongoing process. In fact, Nigeria is also a signatory to Convention 144, which deals with trappism and social dialogue, where if there are issues that arise, those issues can be resolved amicably without scaling them up to disrupt services. So I think this is one very important issue that the unions are here, pilots and engineers, all of them are here, and they were surprised that those very clear provisions, which are global standard, have not actually been accommodated. The other issue is this issue of interim boards. I think it's one important issue that I think we must also find a way of making sure that good governance continue to run on our system, because I am also aware, and part of the reason I think government gave is the effect that those board were not constituted because those appointed have complete of interest. In the whole of two million Nigerians, why do we continue to delay process and continue to have this provision in our law, so that we can continue to say that the boards will not be constituted? I don't think it's correct. Good governance structure entails that we should remove all of this, and at any point we must have full complement of the board of management, because the minister and farm side should be busy, too busy actually to be running also these five agencies. So I think this is one important issue that I think is important. Then, the other one, number four, is the nomenclature of FAN. We are talking of global standard, and we have quoted the global standard that is here, and I don't know why we want to actually remove the world authority there, and we have quoted the United Kingdom, Kenya and many, many other places where we are trying to say we are inculcating a global standard. And we cannot have a Nigerian standard in the aviation sector because it's very competitive. And if it is being very competitive, we must also use nomenclatures that are not globally to enhance competitiveness. So this is one item that we have also included in all of this. And then, the final one, Mr. Chairman, is about this issue of a government agency or cooperation to administer a revenue producing public enterprise. I think, I've mentioned that clearly that is to replace the word authority with administration, which I think will be the basis to make it actually truly accountable. So with these few words, we will support all the bills, but those issues are very fundamental, and I'm sure our unions will raise those issues fundamentally, those that have to do with infringement of core level laws, I think we should try to address it. The contributions to be made by me are in that enhancing interoperability as well as the existing civil military cooperation and collaboration between the Nigerian Air Force and the Jero Sisters under the Federal Ministry of Aviation. It is pertinent to note that Section 1, 4B of the Armed Forces Act 2004 mandates the Nigerian effort to establish and assist in coordinating the enforcement of international laws, conventions, practices and customs as required or assisted by Nigeria relating to area or space activities in the Nigerian airspace. And one of the conventions is the Convention on International Civil Aviation. Specifically, Article 3A of the Convention excludes state aircraft from its scope of applicability. Article 3D of the Convention, however, states that the international civil aviation organization contracted states, of which Nigeria is a key member, undertake when issuing regulations to their state aircraft, that they will have due regard for the safety of navigation of civil aircraft. It is based on this statutory premise that the Nigerian Air Force wishes to make the contributions to enrich the various bills. So the first one, which is the NIMA Bill, on page C4554, C4554, line 27, states that any person who collects, use or disseminate weather forecast or any other meteorological information obtained from any other source, outside approval, license or authority of the agency for commercial or public purpose, or, see, such a person commits an offense under this act and shall be liable on conviction. So what we wish to state here is that civil aircraft operating to military effects and utilize weather information provided by the Nigerian Air Force. So the word public could be ambiguously interpreted as it could denote both civil and military. Therefore, the word public should be amended to civil. That is what we are requesting.
Then exemption, exempting the agency from paying tax. If you look at the force, the section 16 or 18, something, that talks about the force, it has created a new areas of collecting costs for the agency. But also look at the cause of tax, the tax, taxation goes down to the grassroots, and it is saying that it should be exempted, exemption from taxation should be on, on application to exempt it. You have to justify why it should be exempted from paying tax. You don't get all this much fun and you give, provide these services and collect so much money and then you don't send, nothing goes to the people. All right. Now, clause 29, one, searching of premises. Searching of premises, yes, the new lawmakers have donated to agencies to arrest, to search and all that, but we are thinking that it would be better if you obtain, if you can, the law should say they should obtain a search warrant from the police, rather than to go into searching by themselves. It's a law given, donated by the national lawmakers to the police. The police now can donate, but to an extent, not to say they have the right to search. They can have the right to search, but then they have to have warrants, which is a tradition of the police. You know, it deals with the duties of the authorized officer of the agency, you know, and it relates to the power to, the enforcement powers of this agency. You know, we are concerned that this enforcement powers of this agency absent police or enforcement intervention might be exercised, exercised in an abusive manner. So we've actually made proposal that this power should be exercised in protection regardless of the police force in order to mitigate the risk from arbitrary exercise.
So our position on this bill is on, at five, financial provision, on which there is that ten percent of the money charged is paid by FAN to NIMA. We want it, we want it explored so that NIMA can go directly and collect their money instead of relying on FAN to collect money and then sit to help. So that this issue of this person is wanting my money, this person is not wanting my money, we not, I, we want to use this bill to achieve that purpose. Under the ministry, we have the, the spectrum, the entire spectrum for communication, broadcasting in the ministry, under the National Frequency Management Council, and the chairman is the, and the chairman is honorable minister. On behalf of Nigeria Administration, we represent Nigeria. we represent the minis, we represent Nigeria International Telecommunication Union, which is the global body in charge of spectrum. So it is on this note, in the National Frequency Management Council, we allocate a particular band of frequencies for telecommunications to NCC. We locate some to NDC for broadcasting. Then we have what we call in the ministry, the frequency for non-commercial users. So that's the
You know, you know, why this is? You know how Nigeria operates? Tomorrow, this Ministry of Communication may merge with one other ministry. And they're not having anything to do with this again. Just like aviation used to Ministry of Transport. Suddenly, aviation is not Ministry of Aviation. Tomorrow, now aviation may still go back to Ministry of Works and Transport. You understand me? So that's why sometimes we meet these things with the agency that you are, you are short, but can move. You understand? Tomorrow, you may have the most powerful minister today in your, in your, in the ministry. The next person that may take over may not be as powerful as that person. And a different, it will be a different ballgame. So some, I'm not saying we'll still look at it, we have a point. But I still believe that leaving these things with the specific agency, you understand me? Because if you take all these things, maybe next month you are leaving, or next year. It's not permanent, but let's, it's always good to leave it where it can be permanent.
So it's a way, you know, we, National Frequency Management Agency has an act, the domestic side in the ministry.
I, you don't understand this?
I understand you, something. Actually, please, the member of the House who made the kind of complimentary beer, the month of ninth. And it would seem to me that they should, from the two bills, try to excise the NIMET from the Ministry of Aviation. Because of the services it's providing outside to aviation, including marine and other areas. And I think I'd be honored to remember you mentioned again that being a service provider, you should give license and regulatory authority. And because of that statement, the law, it cannot fall under the contingency of the Nigeria's Aviation Authority. So it should be an agency of its own with services provided, I mean, with services that are provided into various areas, in aviation, in marine, and, uh, environment. So therefore, even when we are going to talk of AIB tomorrow or next, the two of them, we should be looking at, because we need to exercising them away from the aviation. They should be independent on their own.
We are saying that, uh, weather is very important worldwide and it must meet front. And, uh, we have been worried that the salaries of NIMET staff are distributed by IPKIS, which is a bottleneck due, due to positivity of front. But, uh, try to hold meeting with the, with the we try to hold meeting with the ministry and the management, uh, that they should look into other areas of Asia, which they are spread out here. So I'm so happy that they, they listed out aviation, defense, finance, and this, because all these things were done at the grassroots. So what we are saying there is that, so. Okay, sorry. Uh, uh, NIMET, you know, we, we do public legal, this is, and towards the last bag of this.
The Vice President of AOH, that is Airlines Operators of Nigeria. Um, unfortunately, I was not here during the, uh, during the sitting of the Senate, where a lot of things, we are said, you're members of National Assembly. So if I'm saying anything that must have been said then, here is also to help the situation. Now we are available. Uh, somebody came here, uh, and said something about
Signing in Marathi.
Airlines owing. He's not a member of NCA, he's not a member of FAN. He's not a member of any of the agencies, I don't know where he got his facts from. Um, but the fact is that, uh, his pension for going against airlines, whether for good or bad, is becoming too much. And, uh, he's getting a lot of, uh, mileage from the press, who call them experts, even when they know next to nothing. Now, on the issue of Airlines owing, my regime, myself and my president, uh, my president, my larger president, have already extended a one only branch to all the agencies. And the DGNC, MD, uh, FAN, President here, would attest to that. Are the airlines owing? Yes, of course. Once your aircraft takes off, even now, if any of my planes is taking off now, we are owing something. Airlines are owing, nobody is saying the airlines are owing. Are the airlines going through bad times? Yes, the airlines are going through bad times. Is Nigerian aviation the way it's being run abroad? No. The Nigerian airlines are going through tumultuous times, not even because of COVID, even before COVID, pre-COVID, we do not produce, not even a stick that can go into the aircraft. The rug you step on cannot be bought from Nigeria, is a special one made abroad, tested. There is nothing we produce here. Your, your, your things come in, the Nigerian customs do not understand anything about AOG, that is aircraft on ground. You bring in and, uh, you bring in a spare into this country today. Maybe your aircraft is AOG, waiting to fly, passengers are killing the airline staff. The customs might keep your spare for another three weeks. When I send my aircraft abroad, even as a foreigner, if those parts go to the maintenance of the nations to repair my plane, those countries allow sm- smooth passage of your spare, because the aircraft is treated like a human being. They allow smooth passage of this immediately. You can come back later and, but your own country, everything is stifled. The president of this country magnanimously, magnanimously granted airlines waivers, custom duties, VAT waivers, and orders.
Permit me, however, to reiterate the fact that the aviation industry has witnessed major transformation in all areas of operation, in particular, the aviation and communication, navigation, surveillance, and air traffic management systems. The increasing deployment of remotely piloted aircraft alphas and drone technologies, as well as other innovations, all of which have necessitated the urgent need for modernization of airspace architecture and the fine tuning of governing laws to support the implementation of new air navigation requirements and address capacity and efficiency and challenges in the use of our nation's airspace. When emergency safety issues pose by rapid change in technology, processes, and procedures, the International Civil Aviation Organization, ICA, has adopted measures in to provide an effective response to industry safety and operational requirements. The Act Establishment NAMA was adopted over twenty years ago. Since then, the process of modernization of air navigation system from ground-based to lightly satellite air navigation has been going on globally. A significant number of new ICA requirements are not captured in the existing NAMA Act. The repeal and enactment of NAMA Act will therefore enable the agency to evolve its system to a more safe, efficient, interoperable, seamless air navigation management and communication and surveillance system that will meet the air navigation operations of the twenty fourth century. Specifically, the new bill will position the agency to implement the recent Aviation Systems Block Upgrade Act book, which was introduced by ICA in two thousand and twelve to ensure the sectoral harmonization and alignment of regional and national air navigation plans to save costs on much needed investments on air navigation infrastructure in the industry. The bill will equally enhance implementation of ICAO Global Air Navigation Plan, which will accelerate the transition to performance-based navigation, which will go a long way to keep the agency efficient and responsive to the needs of airspace users and save cost and time to businesses and air travelers in the country. Additionally, the bill will enable the agency adjust its operational requirements to accommodate drones to new flight levels and safeguard the potential threats posed to safety within the airspace by the use of unmanned aircraft systems, otherwise known as drones. Other areas of operation which will be enhanced by the new bill include, and it's key here to know that we need to achieve this. Yesterday, the Honorable Minister emphasized the fact that there were certain areas within our governing laws that created a situation where there is no clear line between the regulator and service provider. So this new bill will include removal of overlapping provisions and conflicting responsibility with other existing aviation legislations. It will improve aeronautical search and rescue coordination. It will include the capture of ICAO flight plan adopted in two thousand and twelve. It will support Effective Safety Management System, SMS, which is ANX nineteen, adopted in two thousand and sixteen. It will enhance transition from aeronautical information services to aeronautical information management, which essentially is a move from a paper format to a more digital format in, um, transmission of information in the system. It will improve airspace capacity and efficient airspace utilization and transition to the evolving concept of unmanned traffic management, UTM. It will improve regional and national collaboration in the implementation of air navigation services. In the line of these new requirements, the passage of the new NAMA bill before this Honorable House will enable the agency to align its legal framework to current operational realities in the industry, which is what needed to position the agency to discharge the statutory responsibilities more effectively. Whilst thanking the Honorable House for the support given to these bills, we pray the House indulgence to carefully consider and adopt these deals, the passage of which will provide a robust legal framework for the agency to implement the new safety requirements and be at par with the rest of the air navigation service providers in the world. The bill will certainly improve the raw performance and efficiency of the agency and enhance safety and economic growth in the industry. We've had some significant years of air safety, we want to keep it up, we want to maintain it. Because to be classified as safe has a lot of benefits. And not only, uh, does it attract passengers and airlines who want to come to Nigeria, but it also lowers the insurance premiums that the airlines receive. And if we can lower those premiums and the airlines pass it on to, um, to the passengers, I believe it would be a great help, uh, to lower the cost of tickets.
Two comments regarding the NAMA Act. I've heard very loudly and understood the call for increase in funding NAMA. This Chairman, indeed, NAMA has a huge responsibility. But realizing that, the ministry also had found other sources of funding NAMA. Example, NAMA is carried in the FGM budget, in the BASA money, and oftentimes in the UPSEC money, plus the IGR. Um, this for me now that to have submitted in the bill, Mr. Chairman, sir. Respectfully, in our wisdom, we thought is the best that can run the industry. Should there be any further consideration, Mr. Chairman, we would look at it and revert before the end of this public hearing.
Uh, the Civil Aviation Act two thousand and six came to force on November fourteen, two thousand and six, almost fourteen years ago. The Act repealed the following enactments, namely, the courage of, by air, colonial territories and other trust territories, Colonial Act Order nineteen fifty-three, Civil Aviation Act Cup five-one L F N nineteen ninety, Civil Aviation Amendment, Amendment Act nineteen ninety-nine, and the Nigerian Civil Aviation Authority Establishment Act number forty-nine nineteen ninety-nine, and consolidated the laws for the regulation of civil aviation in Nigeria. The coming into force of the Civil Aviation Act two thousand and six coincided with the VASOR Safety Oversight Audit Program Audit of Nigeria conducted by International Civil Aviation Organization, ICA, later that year. The ICA audit assesses the capability of a member state's civil aviation authority to carry out an effective oversight of its aviation sector through the implementation of the standards and recommended practices and the eight critical elements of a state safety oversight program. Uh, Mr. Chairman, for those who may not be very familiar with ICA, but I'm sure most of the people there. ICA is a specialized agency of United Nations that deals with civil aviation matters, sets the standard and recommended practices which, from which we develop our own, it develops its own regu- uh, regulations. ICA to civil aviation is like what all organizations to the health sector. Part of the findings of the ICA audit for that year was the establishment acts of two service provider agencies, namely, the Federal Airports of Nigeria Act nineteen ninety-five and the Nigerian Airspace Management Act nineteen ninety-nine, give them regulatory powers. Whereas ICA requires that CAA of every member state, in this case, the Nigerian Civil Aviation Authority, shall be the only unautonomous regulator of civil aviation in the member state. ICA document eight three three five, chapter three, prescribes two main prerequisites for an effective aviation regulatory system. The promotion of a basic aviation law of the state and the establishment of an autonomous CAA with necessary pass ensure compliance with this regulation. And, Mr. Chairman, this is exactly what we're doing with the Civil Aviation Act. We're dealing with critical element one, primary, uh, primary, uh, primary regulations and, uh, prime legislative laws and, uh, critical element three, establishment of a regulatory body, regulatory system to do the oversight. The above was also the finding of the United States Federal Administration Category One Certification Audit of Nigeria conducted in two thousand and eight. Both audits recommended that Nigeria should take corrective actions to address the findings by amending the set establishment acts to remove regulatory powers from the service provider agencies. Nigeria accepted the recommendation. Indeed, the late President and Commander, Chief of the Federal Public Affairs, the late President Omari Adua, may so rest in peace, on May nine, two thousand and eight, addressed an irrevocable letter of comfort to the then-President of the United States, Mr. George W. Bush, assuring that pending the review of FAN and NAMA Acts, the autonomy of the NCA and its rulemaking powers shall be guaranteed and sustained by the Nigerian government.
All our accident reports are published to the full world to see. They are all on our website since the inception, since two thousand and seventeen. Since the inception, since 2017, we've released over fifty-one reports of all the accidents. We have some. By next week, I'm releasing another four. Anytime we release, we do a press conference. We invite the press. It's a national, it's broadcast even on TV. It's on our website. The full reports are all on our website to see. Because we, accident investigation is a very, very scientific process that goes through different stages, which includes distribution to the stakeholders. And we give them sixty days. We share with aircraft manufacturer, engine manufacturer, the airline, the Nigerian Civil Aviation Authority, the service to vet, and we give them sixty days to review. If they have any comments, they come back to us and we'll work before we do the final release.
Six, we talked about the reports, the conclusion of an investigation and the release of this report. We've looked at this bill in clause twenty-six and we've noticed that there is no timeline in which this report would be released. You know, just like the head of the AIB said. He said in practice, it's normally released within eighteen months. You know, but this is not stated in the bill. You know, and considering the fact, we also understand that this kind of investigations can actually take very long time. It could actually drag on for two years or more. But then, there's also a public interest in the outcome because of it raises a lot of security issues. There's public interest in the outcome of this investigation. So we've made proposal that, okay, that if, just like the head of the AIB said, that eighteen months can actually be stated in this bill, that if the eighteen months is not feasible as an alternative, we are suggesting that on the anniversary of the occurrence of that incident or accident, the AIB should come out and make a public statement on the start of the investigation so far and the security issues, safety issues it has also raised. I mean, I'm sure all stakeholders, not just the airline operators, but the consumers as well, would also be interested in the outcome of this investigation.
Amendments since 1999. Both significant changes have taken place in aviation. The role of the aerodrome operator has increased and international civil aviation organization standards and recommended practices have been amended for improved efficiency and effectiveness. To meet these contemporary demands and international standards, these amendments have become necessary to align the sector with international best practices. The amendments are needed to create the enabling environment for FAN to function transparently, efficiently and effectively. The Federal Airports Authority of Nigeria had submitted a memorandum stating the background information for the amendment of the Federal Airports Authority of Nigeria Act, Cap Foxtrot 5 Laws of the Federation of Nigeria 2004, to the House Committee on Aviation of the National Assembly. The said document, which is hereby adopted for this presentation, provides the reasons for seeking the amendment of the various sections of the existing FAN Act, Cap Foxtrot 5 Laws of the Federation of Nigeria 2004. Subsequently, the authority received the Gazette Bill for an act to repeal the Federal Airports Authority of Nigeria Act, Cap Foxtrot 5 Laws of the Federation of Nigeria 2004, and to enact the Federal Airports Administration of Nigeria Act to provide for the effective management of airports in Nigeria and for related matters, published in Hotel Bravo 461 of the National Assembly Journal. FAN adopts the bill presented in the National Assembly Journal as the formal document, which contains its desired amendments to the existing act, but wishes to draw the attention of the House Committee on the need to effect editorial corrections that occurred in the publication of the FAN bill in the National Assembly Journal, and to present a few amendments to the bill which relates to the core functions and operations of the authority that are necessary in order to fully articulate the desired amendments by management.
FAN selling land for you to develop your airports, it is not done anywhere in the world. You give this land out on lease to investors, to airline operators, to develop them so that you can create and develop your human capacity. We are talking about loans. Most of all the airlines here will have to ferry their airplanes, including the presidential air fleet, abroad for maintenance. And we require foreign exchange. Mr. Chairman, I plead with you and with the Right Honourable Minister and the MD that please, we cannot be paying eighty million, hundred million, two hundred million for a piece of land. I would rather go and buy a land in Banana Island and forget about aviation.
On Federal Airport Authority of Nigeria, and to just sharing my earlier intention to make a brief remark, to rather change it to respond to a few issues being raised here. Regarding operating surplus, it is our position that, Mr. Chairman, we should look at the volatility of air travel and how it can easily be affected by a simple event and thereby causing losses and the vulnerability of FAN in the national security architecture of the country and its importance and significance to the economy. So we believe that giving operating surplus is further crippling the activity of FAN and its significance in the national security architecture. We are kind, understanding, this Chairman. I think aviation agencies should be relieved of this huge burden of operating surplus. And for us in civil aviation, especially in the ministry, we believe that this policy should have been scientifically done. Because what is an operating surplus for FAN may not be an operating surplus for MPA or for NNPC or CBI. So there should have been a scientific formula for calculating operating surpluses, not a blanket twenty-five percent. Because twenty-five percent can mean everything for me and mean nothing for the next guy.
FAN owns the entire airport. There's no question or dispute about that. But the language doesn't seem to take cognizance of that. The language also does not make a distinction between airport terminals and the airport itself. So you have all kinds of terminals and you have FBOs at the terminals. And then the language just says airport, which embraces all these entities and gives FAN the blanket right or power to manage. This is inconsistent with contractual obligations that FAN has gone into with private sector entities. It is inconsistent with billions of naira that these private entities are borrowed from banks to perform their obligations under this contract. So what we have said is that this has to be looked into. Section twenty-four says FAN can discontinue. It doesn't even give qualifications. For instance, in the CBN Act, the Bofeed Act, the central bank cannot just withdraw the license of a bank, for instance. So if I told that part to be invested in FAN, which I think it should not, because one of our contentions is that FAN cannot in one breath be an operator in the industry and at the same time be a competitor in the industry. I mean, I made this point before the Senate and the Chairman of NCA corrected me that FAN is not a regulator. But this law in fact gives FAN certain regulatory powers. If you have the power to take over management and you have the power to discontinue the use of a terminal without any distinction being made between terminals or airports being operated or owned by the federal or state or private entity.
Tomusa Adeyemi, my distinguished colleagues in the Committee on Aviation as operative, the director in the Ministry of Aviation, the commissioner of AIB, MD of FAN, DG of NCAA, Director of NCAT, Chinetomusa Adeyemi of King Airline, and the Chairman of AEPIS, Chairman of ASMAN, Chairman of OAS, Kashim Shetima, Captain Nogu, all the captains of industries in the aviation sector, the union in the aviation sector, the stakeholders, committed stakeholders in the industry. Let me also recognize the press. We have come to the end of this public hearing on the amendment of the six civil aviation bills brought to the National Assembly by the executive arm of government to review some aspects of the Civil Aviation Act. The first was the laying of the bills on the floor of the House at the plenary and their subsequent readings before being transferred to this committee for further legislative action. You may recall that during the committee's inaugural meeting with the Minister and the Chief Executive of the Agencies under the Ministry of Aviation, I told them that the committee were within the framework of the legislative agenda of the ninth assembly strive to be quite to Nigerians and aviation industry that is viral, safe and reliable. I want to assure you all in this hall that we will not renage in this promise. We are quite aware of the place of aviation in our national economy and the expectations of Nigerians from this committee, as well as members of the House of Operative and the leadership. I must also acknowledge that this committee enjoys our further support from the leadership and members of the House of Operative. Therefore, we have more reason to fail in oversighting this high-tech industry effectively. I must equally not fail to acknowledge the resilience, determination and frankness exhibited by all the various groups and critical stakeholders throughout this exercise. The contributions have been very exhaustive and far reaching. From the discussions and memorandos from the stakeholders, it is pertinent to note the following. Strong Nigerian Civil Aviation Authority that effectively oversees the industry without executive interference. The Nigeria Air Space Management Agency with the capacity to take stations and navigation services to 25th century technology and to support the aviation system block upgrade as recommended by ICA in document 9750, Global Air Navigation Plan. Upgrade the Nigerian College of Aviation Technology to degree awarding institution to enable it access to shared education tax form. Expand the revenue sources of Nigeria Meteorological Agency. Also, restructure the Ferryport Authority of Nigeria in line with global best practice. To reposition the Accident Investigation Bureau as an agency that oversees accident investigation and prevention in all the facets of transportation, all the facet of facilitation, to promote the growth of the local airline industry through legislation that will seek to block multiple entry destination for foreign airlines. To create a qualitative platform between the agencies, especially the NCAA and airlines, to iron out areas of friction from time to time. I assure you that we, as members of the parliament, will not undermine your sacrifices and commitment towards these bills amendments. One thing we shall take from here is the fact that we all agree that our aviation industry deserves a better deal. So let us unite in spirit and in flesh to make it a reality. We have to take our pride of place as the true giants of Africa. While slept enough, it's time not only to wake up, but to start running. As you return to your various destinations, I pray for Johnny Messis back to your different locations. And to my honourable colleagues, I cannot thank you enough for your commitment to this committee and also your love for this country, which has manifested expressly in the manner you have handled matters of national importance brought before this committee with passion and devoid of sentiments and sectionalism. Once again, I thank you for all your robust contributions and memoranda, which no doubt will assist us in this amendment process. On behalf of the Committee on Aviation in the prestigious House of Operative, I say thanks and God bless you all.